Evening, we'll be to his honor and glory. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you that you're our God. We thank you that you have kept us and tonight mighty God, we can come and to call upon your name. Truly, there is no God like unto you. Mighty God, we thank you. Had it not been for your mercies, we would not have been here this evening. But your faithfulness is new every morning. Mighty God, as we come, Lord Jesus, I pray that through your Holy Spirit, you will speak to us. You will reveal your word to us. And mighty God, as we look to you now, we pray, oh God, that you hope no understanding. And whatever we learn today, mighty God, should not be forgotten. But in these last days, when perilous time is here, mighty God, we will store up these words. So that, oh God, they can be need and food to us, a light and a lamp unto our feet. Lord God, we just thank you for this evening and we pray, oh God, that whatever is done tonight will be unto you only. In Jesus' name, amen. Amen. We're gonna sing a few choruses before um we get into the word. And this evening, we are relying on the Holy Spirit to take us through this session. For without him, we can do nothing. So we're gonna start by singing, he is here, hallelujah. We declare that the Lord is here. We know that he is here. Hallelujah, he lives within us and when we come together, we know that his presence is here. He is here, hallelujah. He is here, amen. He is here, holy, holy. I will bless his name again. He is here, listen closely. Hear him calling out your name. He is here, you can touch him. You will never, ever be the same. He is here, hallelujah. He is here, amen. He is here, holy, holy. I will bless his name again. He is here, listen closely. Hear him calling out your name. He is here, you can touch him. You will never, ever be the same. One more time, he is here, hallelujah. He is here, amen. He is here, holy, holy. I will bless his name again. He is here, listen closely. Hear him calling out your name. He is here, you can touch him. You will never, ever be the same. Hallelujah. We declare that the Lord is here this evening. Hallelujah. 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 We bless the name Jesus. Hallelujah. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on us. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on me. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on me. Break me, melt me, mold me, fill me. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on me. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on me. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on me. Break me, melt me, mold me, fill me. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on me. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on me. Hallelujah. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on me. Break me, melt me, mold me, and fill me. Spirit of, hallelujah, the living God, fall afresh on me. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Tonight, we are singing. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh. Hallelujah. We need, hallelujah, fresh anointing tonight. Hallelujah. And as we call upon the Lord to come upon us, may we believe in our hearts by faith, knowing that the Holy Spirit will fall upon us tonight in the mighty name of Jesus. Hallelujah. Holy Spirit, thou art welcome in this place. Could you help me start this one? Holy Spirit, thou art welcome in this place. The tune. Kristoff? Holy Spirit, wait that tune. Thou art well come in this place. Holy Spirit, thou art well come in this place. Omnipotent Father of mercy and grace, thou art well come in this place. Holy Spirit, thou art well come in this place. Holy Spirit, thou art well come in this place. Omnipotent Father of mercy and grace, thou art well come in this place. Thou art well come in this place. Hallelujah. 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 We praise the name of Jesus. Hallelujah. We glorify your name, Jesus. Hallelujah. There is no one like unto you, King of kings and Lord of lords. We worship you. We lift you up. You are welcome in this place. You are welcome in our hearts. Lord, we praise you tonight. We honor you. We adore you. We exalt you. Truly, there is no one like unto you. Hallelujah. Blessed Holy Ghost, we thank you for your presence. We thank you for being with us. Hallelujah. And so tonight, we continue to worship the Lord. Sweet, sweet anointing. Pouring out the oil and wine all over me. Pouring out the oil and wine just like a mighty rushing stream. Pouring out the oil and wine all over me. Pouring out the oil and wine just like a mighty rushing stream. Pouring out the oil and wine all over me. Sweet, hallelujah, sweet anointing. Pouring out the oil and wine just like a rushing mighty stream. Pouring out the oil and wine all over me. I will listen to the words of the song. Sweet anointing. Hallelujah. I hope we are feeling that sweet anointing tonight. He's gonna pour the oil and wine, just like a mighty rushing stream. He's gonna pour the oil and wine if we put ourselves in that place. If we apply ourself, if we trust God and put our faith in him. Tonight, hallelujah, we'll feel that sweet anointing. Hallelujah. 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 Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and all that is within me. Bless his holy name. When I think of the goodness of Jesus, hallelujah, and what he has done for me, my soul cries out, hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thank God for saving me. When I think of the goodness of Jesus and what he has done for me, my soul cries out, hallelujah. Thank God for saving me. Oh, when I think of the goodness of Jesus, hallelujah, and what he has done for me, my soul cries out, hallelujah. Thank God for saving me. Oh, I feel good, good, good. I feel good, wonderful good. Every time I talk about Jesus, I feel good, good, good. I feel good, good, good. I feel good, wonderful good. Every time I talk about Jesus, I feel good, good, good. When I think of the goodness of Jesus and what he has done for me, my soul cries out, hallelujah. Thank God for saving me. Oh, I feel good, good, good. I feel good, wonderful good. Every time I talk about Jesus, I feel good, good, good. I feel good, good, good. I feel good, wonderful good. Every time I talk about Jesus, I feel good, good, good. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. When I think of the goodness of Jesus and what he has done for me and all of us, we have a testimony tonight. Our souls cry out, hallelujah. And every time we come to talk about Jesus, we feel good. Hallelujah. So tonight, we come to talk about Jesus. The kingdom inside of us is a spiritual thing. So we feel good tonight to learn more about the kingdom because we need to know more about our kingdom. It's not kingdom dead, it's not of this world. Hallelujah. Out of this world. So tonight, we are blessed people. We are happy people and that is why we feel good. Hallelujah. We bless the name of Jesus. And as we continue this evening in our Bible study, we will do some praying. Bible study is the main thing here, but we're gonna do some praying. Um, there are requests even this week for school, for the children. Bridging abroad, yes. Some of them, they are away from their family, so they feel lonely and things. Was it Leon? Um, Leonard? Ricardo? Okay. And um something came to me today, we should pray about um the prayer that they're gonna have in Alpha Tree. Yes, pray for protection. Now, we as Christians should pray before anything happen. Don't wait till anything happen. I don't like when anything happen and then we rush in. Hallelujah. So we're gonna ask the Lord to um give us that discernment. And when we know that we are gonna do something, then we go ahead. Because look what David did. David attacked the enemy first and then stand up and wait. And step out. Hallelujah. Yeah. And I like that. Don't wait until enemies strike, man. You get at him first and you must win. Because when you shot at him, you not gonna miss. Hey, hallelujah, mighty God. So let us pray. Hallelujah. What a friend we have in Jesus. All our sins and griefs to bear. What a privilege to carry everything to God in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you that you're our God. And as we come in your presence, we ask that you wash us, that you cleanse us. Hallelujah. We pray, oh God, that our supplication will be accepted unto you. Oh God, we lift you up because there is no one like unto you. You are King of kings and you are Lord of lords. You are the king of your kingdom and we are your children. And tonight, mighty God, we count it a privilege, hallelujah, to be in your house, to lift you up. We thank you for your protection. We thank you for your care. We thank you, mighty God, that you have kept us. And tonight, oh God, we can rejoice in a full and free salvation. We thank you for the privilege to come to worship and to lift up your name. In other places, oh God, people have to be added. So God, we're not going to take it for granted tonight. You have blessed us and we thank you. And as we come, mighty God, we lift up this church to you, God. Hallelujah. We pray, Lord Jesus, that you'll move among us. We pray, oh God, that your people, hallelujah, will look to you. Mighty God, knowing that these are the last days, hallelujah, we should make our calling lecture sure. I pray a blessing upon them, God. I pray, Lord God, that you give them the strength and a desire. They will not be weary, hallelujah, but they will lift up your name and they will serve you in spirit and in truth. Hallelujah. Mighty God, we pray for those who are sick. Oh God, you are the healer. You are the miracle worker. You are the great physician, Lord Jesus. We pray, oh God, that you will touch you, will heal you, deliver. We send out your word of healing to those who are sick. Holy Spirit, we ask that you touch them by your might. We pray, oh God, for brother Leonard. We pray, oh God, that you will heal him. Oh God, that you will deliver him from the sickness, from this torment, from whatever is happening, mighty God. We pray for Ricardo, Lord Jesus. We pray, oh God, for 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 sister Adela. We pray, mighty God, for for sister um Loy, cousin. We pray, mighty God, for all the requests that come in for those who are sick. And we pray, oh God, for those who we do not know that they are going through. But God, you are able. We put our faith to you. God, you said mustard seed, fate will move mountains. And whatever the sicknesses are where they come from, in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we declare, hallelujah, that your people shall be healed. We send the fire of the Holy Spirit to burn out every attack of the enemy in the mighty name of Jesus. So your people will be healed to worship you because you said above all things, mighty God, you wish that be in good health and prosper as our soul prosper. Oh God, we just thank you, hallelujah, because you are so merciful. You are so kind. Oh God, we just bless your name, Father. And we thank you, mighty God, for those of us who are bridging or abroad, studying, working, or doing whatever, mighty God. I pray you'll comfort them. You'll visit them. You'll protect them. You'll cover them. You'll cause them to know, hallelujah, that you are there and you will never leave them nor forsake them. And because their families are not there tonight, God, you are there with them. So I pray, God, whatever their situation, some of them are going through rough times. But God, you are a deliverer and you are gonna take them through. We thank you, mighty God, that you will be their provider, hallelujah, their comforter. Tonight, God will lift them up to you. You know them by name, by nature, oh God. Hear, oh Christ, tonight, mighty God, and comfort your children. Protect them from the onslaught of the enemy. So many things are happening in these foreign lands. And mighty God, only you can deliver. And we are trusting you, God, because we know there is nothing too hard for you. What seemed impossible to us, it's possible to you. And we lift up your mighty name. Oh God, we pray for the schools, Lord Jesus. School has started again. And God, we need your intervention. We need, Lord God, your help. We pray for the teachers. God, we pray you strengthen them. We pray, God, you cause them to look to you from whence come their help. Their help come from you who make heaven unharred. We pray, mighty God, for the students, that they'll be attentive, that they will, that they will be obedient. We pray, oh God, the spirit of excellence upon them. We pray, God, that this year they will go to, to go back to school with a new vigor. Lord God, as we pray, Lord Jesus, we pray you protect them from the hands of the enemy. Oh God, from the prey, from those, oh God, who would abuse them mentally, physically, hallelujah, spiritually, sexually. To Lord, we pray, oh God, that you'll cover our children. So many things are happening to them. Gone are the days, oh God, when adults or people would protect children, take them home and see to that they are safe. But God, hallelujah, we are in a new era. We are a new dispensation. And so, God, we are looking to you because you told us that perilous time will come. You told us that parents will be against children, children against parents. Mighty God, we pray for the old, Lord Jesus. And you will cause parents to grow up the children in the way they ought to grow. And when they get old, they will not depart. When they go out, oh God, in the wider world, mighty God, they will do what to adjust themselves. They will be respectful. Hallelujah. And they will know to treat others. They will know to speak to their teachers. We pray, oh God, that you will intervene right now, God, in the name of Jesus. We pray, oh God, for the ancillary workers and for everybody that is in the school system. We pray for the Minister of Education. Lord, give her wisdom, knowledge and understanding. I pray, mighty God, that you will speak through her. I pray, God, that she will look to you for help. Oh God, it's not easy, but you are well able to take her through. Father God, we pray that you provide for these children. God, some of them, the 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 food, I I is not up to par. The diet is not good. But God, we pray that you will send help, that even us, God, you will, you 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 will cause us, mighty God, to to the 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 what you have given us, Lord Jesus, to 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 share and to ensure that our children are taken care of. Help us not to withhold what you have given unto us. Because mighty God, when we give, you will give back to us. Hallelujah. So we pray, Lord Jesus, that you cause the parents to be able to provide for the children. We pray for jobs. We pray, mighty God, that they will look to you, Lord Jesus. We thank you, mighty God. We pray, oh God, for the transportation. We pray that there will be order. We pray, oh God, that the things that um is known to happen in these transportation, that it will happen no more. We pray, mighty God, that the 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 police and the soldiers and and the marshals, oh God, that would attend to these buses. Lord God, will see and 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 see, see what is happening. So that, mighty God, they can characterize this thing and stop this thing. So we pray, Lord God, that you will reveal and you will expose, so that our children will be protected. So we can have better women and men of tomorrow. Because God, if we don't train them from now, what the world is gonna be like. Oh God, oh God, give out the burden for our children, to care for them, to love them and to see to it that they grow up to be the men and the women that you'd want them to be. Oh God, there are so many things to tell you tonight. But we pray, Lord, that you, Lord God, you know our hearts. And sometimes we don't even know to say it. But God, we just put everything before you. And as we come, mighty God, to our Bible study, we pray that you will speak to us through our teacher tonight. We pray that we will be attentive. Holy Spirit, rain down. Holy Spirit, come in our midst. Holy Spirit, cause us to understand and to learn and to be doers. Oh God, we pray, Lord Jesus, that you will reveal your secret, that they'll be revealed. Oh God, we pray, Lord Jesus, that you will reveal your secret, that there will be revelation. We will learn something that we didn't know before. We thank you for your kingdom. Your kingdom come, your will be done. Have everything your own way, God. Whatever we fail of asking you tonight, Lord Jesus, you will not fail to grant it. Because we look to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. Our speaker tonight will be Reverend Edward, Edward's our pastor. Thanks be to God.
Thank you, Ella Beverly. Good evening, everybody. And for those persons who are joining us through YouTube or Zoom or wherever you're joining us, welcome. We are continuing our look at the Kingdom of God. And tonight, we want to dig a little deeper into the things that we started out on last night. Not last night, last Tuesday. Well, the time flies so fast, it almost like last night. Anyway, we said at the beginning last week that the aim of this study, which I encourage us to keep in mind, is to help all of us to understand what the Kingdom of God calls upon us or calls for as we in terms of our values, in terms of our purpose, and the hope we have in every sphere of life. I was trying to say it out of my head a while ago, but that didn't work, so I'm going to read it. It is to help us understand what Christian faith calls for by way of values, purpose and hope in every sphere of life. When we talk about the Kingdom of God, we are acknowledging that there is a king. We are acknowledging that by virtue of being a king, it must have a kingdom. It must have dominion over some wear and some people. And that kingdom must stand for some things. So just by way of a quick recap, we said that the kingdom, we explored last week, relationships and responsibilities within a kingdom. And the reference point for that was 1 Samuel, chapter 8, from verse 1 to verse 18. That speaks to how Israel came to a king, to have a king. It was the common thing around them as a nation to have a king. And they wanted a king because everybody else have one. But being a king or having a king brought with it some responsibilities. And we want to look to remind you, 1 Samuel, chapter 8, verse 1 to verse 18. And then we looked at who is our king? We talk about the Kingdom of Heaven or the Kingdom of God, or Christ being King of kings and Lord of lords. What exactly, how does he qualify to be our king? We also looked at the aim of his kingdom. We observe that not only is his kingdom not of this world, and not only is his kingdom committed to the truth, bearing witness to the truth, but his kingdom was an everlasting kingdom. There is no end to his kingdom. It is going to last forever. And it is just going to grow and grow and grow. All right. Let's pray before we go further then. Father, we thank you for the Spirit of truth you have given to us, who guides us into all truth, who takes from the Son what you give to the Son and makes it plain to us. We ask, oh God, that you would reveal that which you have ordained for us to know and to apply in how we live here on earth. So, Lord, we can become the kind of citizens in your kingdom that you want us to be. Here, our prayer, we ask you, in Jesus' name. Amen. So, there is a history to the Kingdom of Christ. There is a history to it. And if you remember when John came preaching in the wilderness, St. John, chapter 1, and Luke, chapter 1, remind us of those, the period. The Bible says in Matthew, chapter 3, verse 1, verse 2. "In those days John the Baptist became, came preaching in the wilderness of Judea and saying, 'Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand.'" What is this message? Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand. "For this is he who was spoken of by the prophet Isaiah, saying, 'The voice of one crying in the wilderness. Prepare ye the way of the Lord; make his path straight.'" John was a unique character. Jesus said of him that among those born of women, there was none like him. After 400 years of not hearing the word of the Lord, not having a prophet, John appears in the wilderness with a message of repentance. And he says, "Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand." God's kingdom, or the kingdom of heaven, or the kingdom of God, is a real kingdom. It have a king, like we did study last week. The king has authority. The king rules over a people and a place. His kingdom operates in the whole earth. So, yes. It has a king, it has, the king has authority. And that authority is exercised over real people in real places. Born out for us by the Moody Bible Commentary in page 14, 1, 4, 5, 8. And that same commentary makes the point that Matthew calls, Matthew speaks a lot about the Kingdom of Heaven. And he makes the point that it's the Kingdom of Heaven, not because it exists only in heaven, but because it comes from heaven to earth, which fits in with Jesus declaring before Pilate that "My kingdom is not of this earth, not of this world. It does not operate like how worldly kingdoms operate. Its values are different. Its purposes are different." No. In digging up, digging into this, we go back to Matthew, chapter 4, verse 17. Jesus shortly after his baptism begins to preach. And he is preaching the same message that John brought. John said, "Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand." Jesus preaches the same message. The Kingdom of Heaven has its origins, its beginning, its history, not in the coming of Christ. Because it was planned and prophesied before that. You with me? Sounds strange? So, the Kingdom of Heaven is in God's design for redeeming man from way back. Let's compare some scripture. 2 Samuel, chapter 7, reading from verse 12 to verse 16, and Luke, chapter 1, 32 and 33. 2 Samuel, chapter 7, verse 12 to verse 16, and Luke 1, 32 to 33. In preparation for later, somebody else find Matthew, chapter 7, verse 20 to 22. Still, somebody else find Matthew 22, verse 1 to verse 14. All right. So let's go now with 2 Samuel, chapter 7, from verse 12 to verse 16. And here is a little exercise that we have in mind as we read. 2 Samuel 7, verse 12 to verse 16, and Luke 1, 32 and 33. We want to compare what the prophet Nathan says to David with what Gabriel, the archangel, says to Mary, the mother of Jesus. 2 Samuel 7, 12 to 16, and Luke, chapter 1, 32 and 33.
2 Samuel, chapter 7, 12 to 15. "And when the days be fulfilled, and thou shalt sleep with thy fathers, I will set up thy seed after thee, which shall proceed out of thy bowels, and I will establish his kingdom. He shall build an house for my name, and I will establish the throne of his kingdom forever. I will be his father, and he shall be my son. If he commit iniquity, I will chasten him with the rod of men, and with the stripes of the children of men." 15. "But my mercy shall not depart away from him, as I took it from Saul, whom I put away before thee."
Verse 16.
"And thine house and thy kingdom shall be established forever before thee. Thy throne shall be established forever."
Okay, so David is determined, he is desirous of building a dwelling place for his God. Because he says, "Look at me living in a house of cedar, fine wood, and God's visible, the emblem of God's presence with his people, the Ark of the Covenant, and the Tarponing." And in making known his plan to build God a house, God commissions Nathan the prophet to come and tell David what we just read. "And your house and your kingdom shall be established forever before you. Your throne shall be established forever." Now, me and you know that David not live forever. So him can stand upon the throne forever. All right? So obviously, there is a prophetic element to this. All right? Now, let's look at Luke 1, 32 and 33.
Luke 1, 32, 33. "He shall be called great, and shall be called the son of the highest. And the Lord God shall give unto him the throne of his father David. And he shall reign over the house of Jacob forever. And his kingdom, there shall be no end."
All right. So, let's compare what is said hundreds of years before to David and what is said here to Mary, mother of Jesus. Because there are some themes which are repeated. Firstly, this house, your kingdom, is going to be established forever. He is going to reign over the house of Jacob or Israel forever. Of his kingdom, there will be no end. So it can be that, oh, when the Bible speaks to Jesus saying, "The Lord God will give him the throne of his father David," me and you know that biologically, David was not the father of Jesus. It means the descendant of, forefather of. All right? Then come through the same bloodline, lineage. Fair? Reasonable? Okay. And then, we note that the kingdom run by the kingdom run by certain values and certain standards. We, not only does the kingdom have history, but the kingdom is distinct. Every kingdom, for example, as we know it, have a standard, an emblem by which you identify the kingdom. Me and you now see black, green and gold, and we associate it with Jamaica. Or with the stars and stripes. And we associate it with the United States. Or we see the Japanese with the big red dot in the middle. Whatever, there is a standard. And you hear that people expect a particular kind of behavior or some cultural practices and demeanor based on where you come from. And so Jamaica is lively, is the happiest country in the world. Don't know how them come by that, but so be it. Some people associate us with a Nancy. But the kingdom, every kingdom, have some standards. Every kingdom have things that are Every kingdom have things that are distinct in identifying them. Well, let's look at what the kingdom of God is expected to be identified by. The people who live in the kingdom of God are expected to be identified by these things. Matthew, chapter seven, verse twenty to twenty-two. Alright. Jesus says in verse twenty, by their fruits, you will know them. You will know who the citizens are of my kingdom, by their fruit. Context here. Why would Jesus say such a thing? Well, if we go back a little, he is saying to them, you must beware of false prophets, who come to you in sheep's clothing. But inwardly, they are ravenous wolves. You will know them by their fruits. Men do not gather grapes from thorn bushes, or figs from thistles. Even so, every good tree bears good fruit, but a bad tree bears bad fruit. A good tree cannot bear bad fruit, nor can a bad tree bear good fruit. Every tree that does not bear good fruit is cut down and thrown into the fire. Therefore, by their fruits, you will know them. When we belong to the, when we are citizens of the kingdom of heaven, we are going to be expected to bear particular fruit. Alright? Fair enough? We're talking about the standards by which the kingdom of heaven is known. The citizen of the kingdom, the tree, the fruit tree in the kingdom, is expected to bear, produce particular, unique fruits. Now, let's remember that the kingdom is open to all. True? Remember, whosoever will may come, whosoever believes on him should not perish, but have everlasting life. In times past, when kingdoms were more popular than they are now, anybody could come into the kingdom if you met a particular criteria. Just like how anybody can become a citizen of Jamaica, if you meet the criteria. It's easier for some people who are from Commonwealth countries to become citizens of Jamaica. Somebody else who is from a country that is not a member of the Commonwealth might have life a little more difficult. Some people can become citizens after them marry a Jamaican and live here for a certain time. For example. So there are standards by which, but the kingdom is open to everybody. Hmm? Matthew, chapter twenty-two, from verse one to verse fourteen.
Matthew twenty-two, one to fourteen. And I'm reading from the NIV.
Hold on, hold on, Sharon. One to ten.
Ten, okay. Jesus spoke to them again in parables, saying, the kingdom of heaven is like a king who prepared a wedding banquet for his son. He sent his servant to those who had been invited to the banquet, to tell them to come, but they refused to come. Then he sent some more servants and said, tell those who have been invited that I have prepared my dinner, my oxen and fatted cattle, which have been butchered, and everything is ready. Come to the wedding banquet. But they paid no attention and went off, one to his field, another to his business. The rest seized his servant, mistreated them, and killed them. The king was enraged. He sent his army and destroyed those murderers, and burned their city. Then he said to his servants, the wedding banquet is ready, but those I invited did not deserve to come. Go to the street corners and invite to the banquet anyone you find. So the servant went out into the streets and gathered all the people they could find, both good and bad, and the wedding hall was filled with guests.
Alright, thanks. Look here. Notice, some people had, on the surface, legitimate reasons why them couldn't come to the banquet, or wouldn't come. Fair enough? Yeah, man, some people have to go farm, some people have to go do them business, shop have to open by a certain time, Monday can't miss a sale. And then some people, some people just, we don't want no banquet food. Can't bother with the thing, alright? Do we see that? Am I mixing it up? Alright. So some had reasons why they had something more important to do, some people couldn't bother. But in the end, the king, Jesus is talking here to the nation of Israel, first of all. I'm talking to the scribes and the Pharisees. Eh? But then it is open to everybody. The invitation now is to everybody. Whosoever will may come. Gather all who you can find, invite them to the wedding. Remember, we're talking about the standards that the king has, or the kingdom has, remember? Everybody can come. Hmm? But it is required of those who come to produce fruit. That is how we're going to know that we belong to the kingdom, because we bear the fruit. My neighbor, my neighbor have pumpkin in our backyard. And practically every week, we see a pumpkin come up, because it start run wild when it run over our backyard and run into our backyard now. So we're watching for pumpkin. And pumpkin come and get so big, next morning you go outside, it drop off. Couple of days after, you look somewhere else and you see another one, and it drop off. You, the king has a right to look for fruit in his kingdom. And our king takes a personal interest in what goes on in his kingdom. Somebody else read Matthew twenty-two, from eleven to fourteen. Matthew twenty-two, eleven to fourteen. We made the point here that the king maintains a personal interest in his kingdom. Paul refers to, calls him the righteous judge. Him doing judge according to what him hear. Him doing judge according to what people tell him. Him is the righteous judge. He is not fooled by show. He knows heart. Alright? So, come for us, sister babe.
Twenty-two, eleven to fourteen, King James, version. And when the king came in to see the guests, he saw there a man which had not, which had not on a wedding garment. And he said unto him, friend, how camest thou in either, not having a wedding garment? And he was speechless. Then said the king to the servants, bind him hand and foot, and take him away, and cast him into outer darkness. There shall be weeping and gnashing of teeth, for many are called, but few are chosen.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Ella. So, the king has invited people into his kingdom. And again, remember how Jesus has introduced this discourse. Him said, the kingdom of heaven is like a certain king. So it's the kingdom of heaven him talking about. In this kingdom, where he is using the wedding to give the lesson, that is the illustration. He, everybody has been invited, and now the king comes to see the guests, the Bible says in verse eleven. Him see the guests. And among the guests is a man who don't have on no wedding garment. Oh, you know same do, it's not a wedding garment, because it not look like wedding garment. The fruit, the outward, does not reflect appreciation for the fact that this is a wedding. It don't show that you're supposed to look a certain way, or you know where you're there, and you know what is expected of you. He does not have on a wedding garment. He does not, he's not bearing any fruit. And the question is, how did you come in here without a wedding garment? How? Because me and you know that we can't come in with farm, eh? But the righteous judge knows the heart. So one of the standards by which the kingdom is known, is whether or not we sincere, or not. Eh? Sincere don't mean you're perfect. Sincere mean that if you fall down, you want to get up back and do what is right. Bible says, righteous man, Proverbs, the righteous man might fall seven times, but he gets back up again. The righteous judge says, oh, you're getting here. And he was speechless. In the kingdom, it's not like them victimize you and chase you out. And you can go to a place more, more accepting, more, more pleasing to you. I mean, I like how them deal with me over Jamaica. I'm going to Canada, go and pursue me human rights. Eh? Don't go there, guy, man. Or it's not like you can't deal with how life is going in Haiti, so you jump on a boat and come to Jamaica. What am I saying? Between the kingdom of heaven and what else is out there, it might look like the grass is greener, and you have more prospects and less pressure, if you don't have to conform to this business of godliness and holiness, and enduring hardship like a good soldier. So you've gone over so, where the demands are not as stringent. Yes. You use the microphone, yes.
The funny thing about it, it is the righteous judge who is doing the inspection.
Alright. Alright.
Say if I leave from one part and go over, because that is what I was really marveled about. The righteous judge got, oh, you're getting here, because you could have put on form and fool anybody at the gate and come in. But the thing about it, it is the righteous judge who go do the inspection.
Yes, yes. And the righteous judge make it plain, so you not have no in-between the kingdom and the next place. Hello? Check it out. It's not that you can leave one kingdom here on earth and go to another kingdom, because you have better prospects over there. It's not because you can, I am, I am, I am taken aback at how poor people can give up what they know and are sure of, scrape up all the family savings, and leave places in Africa, to go up to the north of Africa, to go jump on a boat that them don't know who's sailing it, and if it's seaworthy. For go drown at sea. And again, I say me coward, me don't know them thing yet, but it look away. Well, hear this, Jesus says, in making this point, that you either for the kingdom or you are outside the kingdom. Now that sound hard, where's the mercy in that? Don't ask me, ask the master. Because opportunity has been given, invitation has been made. But this kingdom is pursuing truth. It is not pursuing popularity. As part of the difficulty the church of Jesus Christ has today, that we are prepared to make compromises, to make accommodations, because we want the numbers to stay nice, and we want the offering to stay nice, and we want to maintain the profile on TV or wherever else. If Jesus says, take him out, don't, 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 don't put him in the in-between place, because there is no in-between place. You either for me, or you are against me.
However, the logic is there now, there's a saying goes, if you choose to fail, you fail to choose. And as hard as it sounds, if it is that you have given a choice, and you think about it, and you're seeing clear rewards, and you're seeing where you're gonna lose, and because of you want to compromise, the truth about it, you've choose that over this. Said, choose to fail, fail to choose, is as logic as it sounds.
Yeah. We are, we are, we are, we are making a choice. Brethren, make, make, we know this, that the righteous judge not looking at the outside, like how man look. Righteous judge know all one in the heart. And we can't forget that. Next thing we remember, next thing we reinforce about the kingdom of heaven, or the kingdom of God, is that it is a growing kingdom. And it's about pastor, we do that last week, what is the point? I want to make the point that the kingdom of God and the citizens in the kingdom of God must appreciate that me and you have a responsibility, a role to play in the kingdom growing. Hmm? Me and you now go give ourselves with excitement to the kingdom of God and enthusiasm unless we find joy in being members, citizens in this kingdom. If, if you just barely have go through the motion, if you only have go at church because you know want go a hail. You sell yourself short. We, 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 we are engaged in the kingdom because the engagement with the king makes us joyful and gives us purpose, reason for living. We, we, we want people to know what life in this kingdom is all about. Think about it. If me not excited about it, it is hardly likely that me not tell anybody about it. If me not excited about it, it's a show from me face. When me talk to people, it's going to reflect whether or not me value them, or I don't. And I represent the king. I am a citizen in his kingdom, and the kingdom is designed, intended to grow. Isaiah nine verse seven, we looked at this last week, but I want to say it again. Of the increase of his government and peace, there will be no end. Increase mean it just a grow and grow and grow. That's what the increase means. But we have also, Matthew chapter thirteen, from verse thirty-one to verse thirty-three, where Jesus gives again illustrations as to how the kingdom increases, how it grows. Volunteer to read that. And then somebody else find Matthew chapter ten, from verse one. Matthew chapter ten, from verse one to verse fifteen. So the first one, Matthew thirteen, thirty-one to thirty-three. All right, I will read it. Another parable he put forth to them, saying, the kingdom of heaven is like a mustard seed, which a man took and sowed in his field. How much mustard seed him show? One. Ah. 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 I want to say it again. One diggy, diggy mustard seed. One. Which indeed is the least of all the seeds, more or less. The, the, the seed planted into the kingdom, into the field, has come born in a manger, not in a palace. For coronation, he comes into the city on a donkey, not even his own donkey. Small kingdom. Small entry, not significant. But when it is grown, it is greater than the herbs and becomes a tree, so that the birds of the year come and nest in its branches. God's intention for his kingdom is for it to grow. That is what he has designed it for. And, and no communist government, no materialistic, capitalistic government, no dictatorship can stop it from grow. People are get saved every day, everywhere, even to today. There. Eh? All when me and you now witness like we should. People still are get saved. Imagine if we were being as faithful as we should be. Verse thirty-three, another parably spoke to them. The kingdom of heaven is like leavened yeast, which a woman took and hid in three measures of meal, till it was all leavened. Whole heap of meal with a little leaven. If you put too much leaven in the meal, you will end up with, if you put too much baking, what you call it, baking, baking powder? In, in your thing? It going, it going come out like a biscuit where you get from a certain place. Krista can tell us about that certain place. But the point is being made that we might be small in number, insignificant in the eyes of men, but because we bear witness to the truth and we produce the fruit, it grows and grows and grows. What God requires of us is our faithfulness to the call. And then, sorry. Proclaiming the kingdom, spreading the kingdom, is not for profit or personal enrichment. Remember, the kingdom is not of this world. If the kingdom was of this world, Jesus says, men would be out there in the streets fighting for me. Its values, its goals are not what drive him. Them different. What drives the kingdom? We want all men to come into the kingdom, to know the king, our savior. So Matthew ten, one to fifteen. This really ties in with the responsibility we have of spreading the good news about the kingdom of God. But it brings it closer to home in the sense that we must be mindful of why we're doing what we're doing. We, 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 we read the passage with that in mind. Matthew ten, one to fifteen. Volunteer.
Matthew ten, one to fifteen. He called his twelve disciples to him and gave them authority to drive out evil spirits and to heal every disease and sicknesses and sickness. These are the name of the twelve apostles. First, Simon, who was called Peter, and his brother Andrew, James, the son of Zebedee, and his brother John, Philip and Bartholomew, Thomas and Matthew, the tax collector, James, the son of Alphios, Thaddeus, Simon the zealot, and Judas Iscariot, who betrayed him. These twelve Jesus sent out with the following instructions. Do not go among the Gentiles or enter any town of the Samaritans. Go rather to the lost sheep of Israel. As you go, preach this message, the kingdom of heaven is near. Heal the sick, raise the dead, cleanse those who have leprosy, drive out demons. Freely you have received, freely give. Do not take along any gold or silver or copper in your belt. Take no bag for the journey, no extra tunic or sandals or a staff, for the workers is worth his keep. Whatever town or village you enter, search for some worthy person there and stay at his house until you leave. As you enter the home, give it your greetings. If the home is deserving, let your peace rest on it. If it is not, let your peace return to you. If anyone will not welcome you or listen to your word, shake the dust off your feet when you leave that home or town. I tell you the truth, it will be more bearable for Sodom and Gomorrah on that day of judgment than for that tone. I am sending you out like sheep among wolves. Therefore, be as shrewd as snake and as innocent as dove.
All right. Look at the composition of Jesus's team. Who makes up the team? Fishermen, tax collectors, power seekers, and one man who was going to betray him. Quite a mixed bag eh? Tax collectors clearly had standing, them had money. Fishermen were the middle class of the day, we could call them. And, and there were those who just wanted the power. Eh? These are the men who make up Jesus's team. What do they have in common? He says, you have power. You have authority. Regardless of where you are from, your standing in life, you have power. I give you power. I give you power to work miracles in my name. Not only do they have power, but they also have a message. You can't go out there and tell people where you want to tell it. This is what you must say to them. Now, you may say, but that is a constraint. Well, Jesus said, I only come to bear witness to the truth. I don't come to preach no fancy doctrine because my kingdom is not of this world. The only way you going to get into the real kingdom, the eternal kingdom, is by preaching the truth. Say to them, this is what you're going to preach to them. The kingdom of heaven is at hand, it is near you. But you have to respond. Kingdom of God does not impose itself on anybody. It's an invitation that is given, and anybody can come. Secondly, not only do we have power and message, we must stay focused on the purpose. Hmm? Stay focused on the purpose. What are you come here for? You not come here to be entertained. If you go to a place and them accept you there, stay there. Don't walk up and down from house to house based on how much TV them have and the size of the TV, and whether or not the TV is upon the wall in your room. Wherever you go and them accept you, stay there. Don't go from house to house. Stay focused on your purpose. And then, thirdly, bear in mind, freely you have received, freely give. Don't make a living out of your preaching. Now, what that mean? Cause, cause, plain and straight for some people, this is a business. Rates have to be negotiated. Hmm? And agreed. Freely you have received, freely give. The pastor then how you get paid for the work you do. Me don't negotiate with nobody how much me must get. Hello? I do not deny people ministry because them know meet the rate set. You with me? And, and it is true that the workman is worthy of his hire. But from the point of view of the workman, him not doing it for the money. Freely you have received, freely give. And, and if we have any doubt as to how serious Jesus is about this, him said, don't carry no gold or silver or copper in your money belt. Don't carry no bag hmm? For your journey. Don't carry no change or clothes. Make the ministry take care of you when you go out there. The workman is worthy of his food. Not for profit. Uh, yes, sir.
Sometimes, most of the times, interpretation of people will cause people to lead astray. Just in this case, the scripture clearly said what you must not bring. But yet still, the workman is worthy.
Yes.
And then, at the end of that, him say, freely receive, freely share give it. One day I was listening to Billy Graham, and Billy is saying that when they go upon these massive crusade, him said, there are times God puts you at a place because human being is to get proud and bossy. There are times God put you in a place, we have to learn to depend on him. So when God said, go out there without, without none of these things, because the truth about it, copper, silver, gold, all of that is represented money.
Mm-hmm.
Said, therefore, you can get distracted in trying to make in a living while you're on the job. Say, Billy Graham say, God bring him to a place already where at night, when the crusade supposed to start, that is when the provision come. Say, him say, up until the point of everything putting together, them don't know where the thing are come from.
Yes.
Them don't know, at the night of the crusade, God did the provision.
Mm-hmm.
Say, on the basis of don't carry nothing, and the workman is worthy of his meal, it is God who will provide.
Yes. That, that's exactly what it is. When you, when you go on the basis of me have my own thing, they ever want treat the people them with arrogance. You know, for the, I know. You with me? A, a, and again, read into what Jesus says. Your, your, your reliance is not on what you have. You get something that is valuable, you're calling to something that is bigger than you, freely you get it, freely give it. And then he goes further. Him said, don't, 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 don't come with the excesses out of your own stock. Because that is going, is going to be a loophole for you to start treat the thing or treat the people who you go to serve freely, you are go start treat them with, with contempt, with arrogance. Think about it. And he makes the point. And he makes the point, the workman is worthy of his food. He may take care of you. He will take care of you.
Thing here is that if you take your silver and your gold and whatever, you have to make yourself comfortable. You will be stopping that person from getting a blessing because they are supposed to take care of you.
Yes.
And that is not how the Lord wa, wa, wanted the flow. So they, the householding who take care of you
Mm-hmm.
would do it on the basis that they would be blessed as well. So you, you would have been taken blessing to that house, but if you take your gold and your silver, then you stop the flow of the blessing.
You, 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 you impede the flow, stop the flow, but at the same time, you, you make it difficult, more difficult for the, the, the grace and favor, the intent of God to be seen. Because them bring, you expect steam fish and the people them bring to bulla and a little pear. And say, what it's, man, the manna garden. We going out a road, go and buy a fish. Just for argument's sake. The point, the point is, take what people put in front of you. Elsewhere, he will say whatever is set before you. He kingdom again, different from how kingdom out a road run. Questions, comments? Next week, God willing, we're going to look at the kingdom of heaven is like. Jesus makes several comparisons throughout the gospel as to what the kingdom of heaven is like. Everybody remembers, the kingdom of heaven is like a little child. But there are some others. So we're going to look into those because, brethren, I, I am, I am, I can't avoid how church are run. Not our church, you know, the church generally, or the church of Jesus Christ operate. And, and it's almost like the standards of the world are being incorporated to become the same standards by which the church is run. I, I want, by the grace of God, for us to, to look at what difference there is between how the kingdom of heaven set up as against how the kingdom of the world operate. Any questions anywhere, virtual or in person? Krista? Anybody online writing anything? Okay. All right, let's stand together. We're going to closing prayer. Father, we thank you for your word to us tonight, reminding us that this is a kingdom that has not just come to us by chance overnight. It is something that you have ordained for us to be citizens of. And as citizens, we are representatives of that kingdom. Lord, we ask you by your Holy Spirit again to, to refresh, renew our zeal to be representatives of that kingdom, ambassadors for your kingdom in how we live, the, the fervor with which we serve you. Whether we are on a nine to five or on a bus in some workplace, help us to remember that the kingdom to which we belong is not of this earth. Its values are different. How we conduct ourselves is different. Lord, help us to understand and to value the privilege we have of being citizens in your kingdom. Help us to remember the power that has been given to us. Help us to remember the message that has been given to us. And Lord, by your grace, keep us focused, not to be distracted by the world around us and its temptations or the, the raging storms around us. Cause greater are you who is in us than he that is in the world. Thank you for the privilege we have of giving back to you a portion of what you've blessed us with. As we part, Lord, go with us. Cause your grace to be upon us. Cause, Lord, that the, the thrill, the value, the meaning of being a citizen of your kingdom would grip our hearts again. Here our prayer, we ask you in Jesus's name. Amen. God bless you. Have a good night.